Good evening, and I'd like to call the City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, April fifteenth, 2025, to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing none, I'll move the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. First item up, our Presentations, Proclamations, and Acknowledgements. We have several this evening, and we'll go through those accordingly. The first one up is Mole Less May Proclamation. And we'll start off with... Is there stormwater?
I can take that, Mayor.
You got that one? All right.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This Mole Less May Proclamation is really to focus on encouraging residents to adopt eco-friendly lawn practices during the month of May. That is to allow their lawns to grow a little bit longer than they otherwise might leave them, which promotes early-season food forage for critters, insects, and birds alike, and also is less stressful on the plants themselves, that being the turf. Mole Less May Initiative directly supports the city's goals for water quality, water protection, conservation, and pollinator habitat preservation. So, just a couple notable things on that. We will promote this program over the next month with weekly social media posts. Will also feature some information on this in the upcoming newsletter that'll be going out the door in the next few weeks, and have information on the city's website. Just one quick thing lastly here is that some folks may be wondering about the code enforcement aspect of this with longer lawns. And for this program, we do suspend the enforcement on that for properties that are in good set... in good standing, which is to say ones that don't have other track records of violations and so forth. So, I can turn it back to you, Mayor, to begin the proclamation reading.
All righty. Just before we start, I did want to note here, there is a registration process, so it goes along with that?
Thanks for catching that, Mayor. There actually is no registration required this year. That's also a shift in the program. I forgot to mention that. Thank you.
All right, so no registration this year. All righty. So with that, go ahead, and we'll read through the proclamation, and then we'll go through the motion.
Whereas the city of Rosemount has a vested interest in the protection of pollinators such as bees, butterflies, and birds because they're vital to food production and healthy ecosystems, but are increasingly threatened by habitat loss, pesticides, and disease, and...
Whereas the city manages water and stormwater utilities, making water quality protection and water conservation critical areas of concern. And whereas applying lawn care and landscaping best practices on private and public lands can play a significant role in protecting water quality, conserving drinking water, and providing pollinator habitat, and...
Whereas the city of Rosemount encourages residents to practice low-input mowing, leave the leaves, plant native plants, and only water and fertilize when needed in support of these goals. And whereas Rosemount demonstrates its commitment to environmental stewardship through sustainable practices on city lands, including limited mowing and integrated pest management, and...
Whereas Mole Less May is a voluntary initiative encouraging residents implement lawn care best practices during May to benefit pollinators and the environment.
Now and therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Weisensel, Mayor of Rosemount, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mole Less May to promote awareness of pollinator emergence, support early-season habitat, and encourage low-input lawn care practices in our community. Be it therefore resolved that for the month of May, staff shall not issue lawn height violations on occupied properties in good standing, allowing residents to voluntary delay mowing to support pollinator emergence and early flowering plant growth, even if grass exceeds ordinance limits. Dated this fifteenth day of April, 2025. Signed, Mayor. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Klimpul, second by Essler. Roll, please.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
And that completes item three A with five zero passes. Next item up, Rosemount Adopt a Drain Earth Day Challenge Days. Am I back to you as well?
You are. Thanks, Mayor. The Adopt a Drain Proclamation is next up on your agenda, and that's a community-driven water protection measure or step program. Adopt a Drain empowers residents to actively protect local surface waters by adopting and cleaning storm drains, which directly helps the city reduce pollution, flooding, those sorts of problems. It has a proven impact, and the reach of this program has been expanding since its origination. Here in Minnesota, it's now up to sixteen states, so it's spreading across the country well, and it's demonstrated significant results so far. Just in some stats for you, in Rosemount to date, we've had, and this isn't this particular year, but historically, I'll say, one hundred and twenty-two drains adopted out of our more than three thousand, so there's still a lot out there to be adopted. But fifty-four individuals have picked that up, and they've saved about thirteen hundred pounds of debris from going into surface waters. You step that up to Minnesota and beyond, and we're looking at force multiplier here with a program like this, saving hundreds of thousands of pounds of debris across the country. So it's good for surface waters and the environment in general, and also helps us to just spot things. Folks can be our eyes and ears out there and help us to take care of these things. So, last thing I'll say is there's a friendly national competition promoted by the program that spans between April fifteenth and thirtieth, so the proclamation helps to identify and key in on that as well.
All right. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the proclamation, followed by the motion.
Whereas storm drains placed in curbs and backyards reduce flooding and property damage by moving excess rainwater and snowmelt runway runoff away from streets and private property, and...
Whereas clogged, snow-covered, and iced-over storm drains can lead to traffic safety hazards and property damage, and...
Whereas storm drains connect directly to neighborhood ponds, lakes, and wetlands, and act as a conduit for pollution like road salt, fertilizers, pesticides, grass clippings, and leaves into water resources, and...
Whereas to date, fifty-four volunteers have adopted one hundred and twenty-two drains and removed over thirteen hundred pounds of debris from storm drains in the city of Rosemount. And whereas the Adopt a Drain Program encourages residents to keep storm drains clean of debris, snow, and ice, to preserve water quality in neighborhood ponds, lakes, and wetland, improve safety, and prevent property damage, and...
Whereas a member of the Metro Watershed Partners in Adopt a Drain Minnesota, the city of Rosemount encourages residents to adopt one or more storm drains near their homes. Now and therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Weisensel, Mayor of Rosemount, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim April fifteenth through April thirtieth, 2025, as Adopt a Drain Earth Day Challenge Days in Rosemount, as we encourage residents to register to adopt storm drains at mn.adopt-a- Dated this fifteenth day of April twenty-five. Signed, the mayor. With that, would someone like to move the recommended motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Essler, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Klimpul?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
That completes three B, five zero. We'll move on to three C, recognition of city of Rosemount volunteers. And looking to...
I can take that.
All right, to our clerk.
Yeah, so tonight, we just want to take a moment to recognize and express our gratitude to the volunteers here in the city of Rosemount, who give their time and energy and compassion to our community. Their contributions help make our city stronger, more welcoming, and more connected. Whether they're supporting local events, caring for our parks, caring for our streets, their efforts do not go unnoticed. On behalf of the City Council and the entire community, we want to be able to say thank you for this recognition, and as part of this, we're going to be hosting a recognition event on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, beginning at four forty-five PM at the Steeple Center. We'll have light refreshments there, but also just an opportunity for us to thank all of our volunteers, and of course, City Council will be there as well to express their gratitude for this. So with that, I'll just ask that the City Council read the proclamation.
All right, and again, we'll do the proclamation, and followed by, I guess, that's it. Just read the proclamation. We don't have enough...
No.
Okay, read the proclamation, please.
Whereas the city of Rosemount is proud of the volunteers who continue to enrich our community through their concern, commitment, and generosity of spirit, and...
Whereas Rosemount has numerous community organizations and events that thrive with volunteer participation, and...
Whereas our volunteers show every day through their actions that they truly care about our community and the people who live in it, and...
Whereas the city of Rosemount wishes to celebrate the impact of dedicated volunteers who inspire others and who have discovered their power to make a difference, and...
Whereas we thank volunteers for their wonderful contributions, their hard work, and their commitment to help make our community stronger, more vibrant, and a better place in which to work and live. Now and therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Weisensel, Mayor of Rosemount, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim April twenty-seventh through May fourth, 2025, as National Volunteer Week in the city of Rosemount, and urge all citizens to recognize volunteers who contribute to their time, talent, and energy in our community. Dated this fifteenth day of April, 2025. Signed, the mayor. And would just simply offer that this is one of the things, when we talk about hometown feel, the amount of volunteerism is fantastic in our community, and we appreciate all those With that proclamation being read, that'll complete item three C, and we'll move on to Arbor Day Proclamation. Mr. Schultz.
All right, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity. This evening, we have another proclamation in front of you to consider. This is an Arbor Day proclamation. We are in our thirty-third year as a Tree City USA celebrated community, and part of that celebration and part of the requirement is that we do observe Arbor Day, and we have some sort of an Arbor Day event. And so, again, this year, we're going to be looking at naming May third as Arbor Day, and then we will be having a tree giveaway on May third at ten AM at the former Public Works Garage, starting at, I mentioned, ten AM. We're going to give away one hundred and fifty trees. They're anywhere from six to eight feet tall. They're bare root trees, so we do ask that people get those planted within twenty-four hours of receiving them. This year, we have a variety of maple, apple, and birch trees that we'll be giving away. We do remind people to make that go for State One call before they dig in their yard, seventy-two hours before doing so. And with that, I can stand for questions.
So it's at the old garage?
It's at the old Public Works Garage. Correct.
All right, so where it's always been?
Yep, it's where it's always been. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? And again, we're thanking these free trees is from Dakota Electric.
Dakota Electric. There is a donation item on the agenda tonight. They... That's for a different event, but they do provide partial funding for these trees, but they will come out, take part in the event with us.
All righty. With that, we'll go ahead, read the proclamation, and then move the recommended action.
Whereas trees and forests brighten Minnesota's future by creating jobs, providing recreational settings, increasing property values, and making cities more livable, and...
Whereas trees and forests brighten society by building strong community ties, reducing crime, and providing common meeting places, and...
Whereas trees and forests brighten our lives by providing lumber for building homes, fiber for producing paper, foliage for decorating, and food for eating, and...
Whereas trees and forests brighten the environment by moderating climate, improving air and water quality, conserving water and energy, and sheltering wildlife, and...
And whereas each year on the last Friday in April and throughout the month of May, Minnesota pays special tribute to the trees and all the natural resources they represent, and dedicate themselves to the continued health of our state's community and rural forests. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Weisensel, Mayor of Rosemount, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May third, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Rosemount, dated this fifteenth day of April, 2025. And with that, someone like to move the recommended action.
So moved. I'll second.
I have a motion by Klimpul, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul?
Aye.
And that completes item three D with five zero vote, and we are complete with our Presentations, Proclamations, and Acknowledgements this evening. We'll move on to response to public comment. I believe we do not have any this evening. We'll move on to public comment number five. Individuals wishing to come before council on subjects that are not part of the meeting agenda typically. These replies to these concerns expressed may be through a letter or phone call within a week or so of this council meeting. Anyone wishing to come before council may do so at this time, state your name, address, and your comment or concern. All righty. Seeing no one making a move to the podium, we'll consider public comment complete for this evening, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have multiple items up through six P. So this evening, we have bill listings, minutes of the April first regular and work session meeting for council, approval of council travel, approval of the Dakota County to join the MVTA Board, subdivision agreement for Amber Fields twenty-first, Park and Rec. Commission Bylaws Amendment, donation acceptance from Rosemount Lions Club. It was five hundred dollars for the spring egg hunt programming that just occurred, request by Kamal and Omar, and APRO development for approval of a conditional use permit, release of the subdivision agreement for the Morrison, resolution of support Bonner Path Trail. That's a grant application approval, the construction agreement for one hundred and forty-seventh Street West, public road access for future retail development there, approval of the subdivision agreement with the Rosemount Middle School for its new construction, Minnesota Deed, and Dakota County Grant Resolution of Support for Project Falcon, Prestwick Place Twenty-seventh Edition Final Platte Approval. That relates to the Willie McCoy Restaurant and the Lifetime Facility Change Order Number That change order is from contingency funds that are funded by Lifetime, not the city. Any items wish to be pulled for further discussion or comment? Council?
None here.
And there?
Six E.
Six E. All right, we'll pull six E. Anyone wish to move the consent agenda items six A through P with six E removed for further discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Essler, second by Klimpul. Roll, please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
And that passes five zero. We'll go ahead and pull up six E. Councilmember Essler.
Yep, and I just pulled this really quick. I don't need anybody from staff to comment. I just wanted to pull it just to... An education for the community. So right now, the MVTA Board, the Board of Commissioners is... Includes all of the cities that are served by MVTA. In addition, Scott County, who's the other neighboring county that also has all these communities. Dakota County has not been on the MVTA Board for a number of years. They used to be on the MVTA Board. They... The Board at the time, several years ago, had voted to remove themselves from the MVTA Board of Commissioners. With... They reassessed that. We're happy to... Especially being a Dakota County community, we're happy to get the Dakota County back because Scott County has been participating the entire time. We're excited to get Dakota County back on board, representing the Board of Commissioners as well. I think it's nice to have a little bit of a balance on, you know, when we're representing all the communities in both Scott County and Dakota County. It's good to have the voice of Dakota County back in the room. I serve on the MVTA Board, representing Rosemount, and I think it'll be good to have Dakota County represented as well. So I just wanted to pull it for education to the community.
Is it one of the commissioners?
Yeah. Yep. So they have a representative that'll be one of the commissioners.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, would you like to move the recommended action?
Yeah, I'll recommend that the City Council approve the resolution as attached.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Essler, second by Klimpul. Roll, please.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
That completes six E on all of the consent agenda five zero. Completing, moving on to public hearings, the 2025 Street Improvement Project Assessment Hearing and Adopt the Assessment. Roll. Turn it over to Mr. Erickson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a brief presentation for... To sort of set the stage for the assessment hearing for you all. Most of you have been through one or two of these already, maybe more, but just wanted to get it prepared for everybody else who's in the room. So, quick overview on the schedule, and again, just I put some of this in here because we'll post this presentation on the website as well, so some of this is a little bit extra. Again, project area is in the... Just south of the Rosemount High School and right near the middle school and the Rosemount Elementary School. Includes the streets that you see there in red. Additionally, we're improving the intersections and the bumpouts on one hundred and forty-fifth Street, but that is all that we're doing on that, on one forty-fifth this year. Quick overview on the schedule. As you can see, we've been through a good part of the preconstruction portion of the project. We do have... The contract was awarded last month, and then of course, we have a... We'll have a preconstruction conference in about two weeks, and the contractor will begin working. I have June there. They are allowed to do some work in May, but not an extensive amount of that, so... And then they'll finish later this summer or very early fall. I know one of the things that's been of concern for the residents in the area and a number of other people who have, you know, students or activities at the high school. There's several projects in the area, so of course, we've got our... We have our street project that covers the southern portion of the picture on the screen. There's also work that's going on on Highway Three, where they're going to construct a roundabout at the entrance into the Rosemount High School. So, Highway Three will actually be closed. It's a what we call a hard closer. You will not be able to get through there at all, so there'll be plenty of signage. And the planned detour route for that, there's more information, but it's county road, so McAndrews over to Diamond Path and then down to forty-two. So there's a major detour for that. We do have some things in the contract if there's some... If we have issues with cut-through in town, and we'll be able to enact some of that. And then, of course, the last part is there is some projected construction at the Rosemount High School. Again, that's late summer, early fall, I believe, for startup on that. So, definitely a lot of coordination. We're coordinating with the school district, with MnDOT. I know I've been... Nick and I have been working together on sort of laying out some of the details, and I know that Lee will be involved in a lot of that as well. I do want to just mention one thing, and that's the fact that there's always going to be one clear access into Rosemount High School. So, we are doing work on chili as part of our project, but that will be after the route... The, excuse me, the Highway Three project is done, so... There may be some utility work that will try to get done ahead of time, but it won't be major closures, and there will be, for the most part, there'll be a paved driving surface, at least the existing pavement. Pretty tough shape, but it'll still be there. Onto the assessment hearing. Again, this is... It's required by a state statute. If there's going to be assessments on there, so council is requested to hear and consider all objections to the proposed assessments. They can be challenged by the property owner, so just to note that. I have not received any objections in writing, so they have to be raised either before or at the assessment hearing. They have to be in writing and signed, and then it can be appealed if the council does adopt the assessment. So it can be appealed to district court. However, there's a couple of requirements on that. And then finally, there may be some options for assessment deferrals. I wanted to mention how we calculate the assessments. We do have an assessment policy, and generally, that policy says it's thirty-five percent for surface improvements only. So any utility work that's done, water, sewer, storm, for example, we're adding a couple of hydrants, we're doing some work on the sanitary sewer and lining that in the area, we're doing some work on some of the storm structures, so that is all covered via the... Those particular funds, so that is not assessed back on the property owner, so. Collector roads are calculated just a little bit different. We do a narrower section as part of that, and then the single-family assessment is based on a per-unit, so we take the number of properties that are... That abut the project and are addressed on a road that's being improved, and then just divide by the number of properties. And I do want to, of course, note that the city does pay for the rest of that surface improvement. So thirty-five percent roughly is assessed, the other sixty-five is paid by the rest of the street capital improvement plan, or CIP budget, so... I want to... Couple notes here. Again, I mentioned the one hundred and forty-fifth Street PED crossings. Those are not being assessed. Those were part of a bid alternate, so we know what that cost will be for that project. They are based on the low bid, and including, we have design and then some of the... Some contingency as part of that, and then they've been calculated for three different types of properties. We have a single-family, there's a multifamily, which is the Rosemount, that's only one parcel, and then either what we're calling commercial or institutional, which would be, you know, there's a few businesses, and then school districts is... That's the best example there, so... I did lay out the... What we had from the feasibility report, and then based on the low bid, so you'll see across the board, everything has dropped a little bit. So the single-family per parcel assessment is a little over forty-four hundred dollars. And then, of course, the multifamily, it did drop a few dollars per foot, as did the commercial, and I put the ranges high and low for the commercial parcels on there as well. This is based on... These assessments are paid over a ten-year timeframe, and there's... The interest rate is four point nine five percent on this, so it shows... It'll show up annually as part of the property taxes, should the resident or the property owner not pay that upfront, which they are allowed to do. We allow them to pay up until the end of October, and they can do that interest-free if they... Should they so choose to do that. If not, it does get certified to the county, and then it's paid over a ten-year timeframe. And then just to touch base again, I think most of... And then just to touch base again, I think most of, this came up during the, the contract award, so again, initially, we had an estimated price of about 3.1 million with the low bid, it came in at just, just a little over 2.6 million. And then again, we have our, our funding sources here, so you'll see that the, the big bulk of the surface is under the street CIP and then the assessments is the other portion of the surface. And then water, sanitary sewer, and storm pick up the rest of those portions of the And then finally, we have project contacts, so we have the general engineering number, of course, my name, number, email is there. Larry Poplar is our project manager from TKDA, our design consultant. We will have an inspector on site and that name will be, we'll put that name on the website so that residents have access to that. We'll be doing, we'll do newsletters again on a weekly basis. We have a couple of locations picked out for, it'll be, it's a mailbox, but it, that's where we'll put the flyers for the newsletters for the residents, so. And then again, we did, I worked with Lee to make sure we had a simple URL and so instead of a bunch of numbers, dashes, and letters, if you can remember the year and you can remember the project, you can find the website. Or you can of course, use your smartphone and grab the QR link and you're, and you're right to the website. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. I'll open up the floor to questions from council.
So I was just going to ask, so I know you said that the communication's going to be quite cumbersome, right? You have Lee and everybody's working on it. Do we have any rough dates and maybe I missed that when I was looking through some of this, but like beginning, end dates?
So I, I don't have a start date for the contractor yet. By contract, they're allowed to do some work on streets with the exception, they can't work on chili, they cannot work on Cameo, and they're not allowed to work on, I believe, 144th Street. So there's, there's a few streets that we're not letting them work on. If they want to get in and do a few other things on some of the other more limited access type streets, they can do that ahead of time. And then the MINDOT project will start on June 6th, I believe it is.
Okay.
And so they'll, they'll start right away and they're due to be done in August.
Right.
So they have, they've got a hard schedule. I know the, we've worked with a contractor that has that project as well, so.
Okay.
And we're doing, we have a little bit of water main there, but as far as, you know, dates when they're going to actually be onsite, we don't have that yet and we'll likely get that, well, we'll get that with the schedule at the preconstruction conference.
And when you do that, you'll be able to communicate to the residents right away, right?
Absolutely.
That'll all be, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will say, I appreciate that you had the slide showing the three major projects all happening at the same time. I, I fully anticipate getting an earful about that all summer, but just to reiterate, this has been tightly coordinated with the partners at both the school district and MINDOT and it's going to be a couple of rough months, but it's kind of like ripping a Band-Aid off in a way, getting the three together all at once, correct?
Yes.
Best way to think of it?
Yeah, that's, that's the best, instead of, you know, pulling that Band-Aid off slowly over a couple of years, this was, this will be all at once and I'll, I'll apologize ahead of time because I know it's going to be challenging for people out there, but definitely, you know, reach out, you can certainly call me and they can reach out to our, to our project manager and then of course, we'll have a full-time inspector on site for our project as well.
And I appreciated the detail too about the timing of when you'll be touching chili and how that's going to coordinate with MINDOT, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. And with that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on assessments. Anyone wishing to speak on the assessments may do so at this time, please state your name, address, and your comment or concern to council. Anyone coming forward, going once? My computer goes off. All right, three times. With that then, I'll move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The hearing is closed. Is there any further discussion, comments for staff? All right, seeing none, would someone like to adopt the recommended action on the resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the assessment role for the 2025 Street Improvement Project, City Project 2025-02.
Second.
I have a motion by Freski, second by Tyson, roll please.
Essler?
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
And that completes the assessment for item 7A, 5-0. Good luck with the project. Move on to eight unfinished business, which we have none this evening, and then the next item up is new business. Mr. Schultz returns on the dog project, receive bids and awards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This evening before you is a recommendation from staff to accept the bids and award a contract to the lowest bidder for the dog park project. This dog park is being planned to be built south of the Umore Ballfields on the east side of Akron Avenue across from Amber Fields. The space is about 2.6 acres in size. It's going to have a large fenced area for dogs of all sizes and then also a smaller fenced area for the smaller sized dogs. We are including other site amenities along with the fencing that we're going to be putting in. We'll have a sun shelter, we'll have picnic tables, water fountain, and then we're also going to have some play amenities that are going to be built by a local boy scout as part of his Eagle Scout project. He was in here a couple of weeks ago looking for a project and he's, he's turning 18 at the end of the month and he's, he had something lined up, it fell through, so we were able to help him out, so he's going to do that, get those built. We're going to put them in storage until we need them and until the turf is established out on the site. But like I mentioned, this was put out to bid recently, we had seven bidders. We recognized many of the names on our contractor list. The low bid was submitted by Freeji's Landscaping, who's done a lot of work for us in our park system over the years through bid process. We did have a high bidder, Swan Companies, who actually did win some projects last year with us. This year, they, they were not as fortunate, but we did, we have used them. We had Shoreland Contracting with us last year, working on a park project, so we were all happy to see these bids. We did borrow the qualifying information from Mr. Egger and to make sure that our bidders were all qualified and there weren't any challenges with any of them upfront, so that was nice. With that, like I mentioned, the low bid was submitted by Freeji's Landscaping and the bid price was $389,275 and staff is recommending that they be hired to carry out this project. And I will stand for questions.
Open up to the floor.
Do you have any anticipated timeline?
They will get started here probably about the first of June and they'll have the project wrapped up by, we're looking at probably middle of August.
Is it used for that project?
Well, we seeded the project last year, the, the dog park area, so depending on how much disruption takes place on that surface and how that turf comes in, will kind of depend on when we will open the dog park. We're thinking probably next spring, but we're hoping that things really turn out good out there and maybe something could look, be looked at this fall even.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. Is, any questions, comments? Otherwise, I'll look for the recommended action motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the bids for Dog Park and award the project to the lowest bidder, Freeji's Contracting for a bid price of $389,275.
Second.
Got a motion by Tyson, second by Essler, roll please.
Climpel?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
And that passes 5-0 and completes item 9A. We'll move on to announcements. Are there any city staff updates to be shared this evening?
There are not, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm disappointed. All right, we'll move on to council, anything from council? Otherwise, we'll move on to the calendar. We have coming up here on April 22nd, the Planning Commission from 6:30 to 7:30 here at City Hall. On April 23rd, the Youth Commission Meeting from 3:45 to 4:45 at the Steeple Center, Park and Recs Commission Meeting, and I should change that, we now call it the Park and Natural Resources Commission. That was one of the consent agenda items this evening that was changed. And that's April 28th, 7 to 8 p.m. here again at City Hall. The Volunteer and Commission Appreciation Event, mentioned earlier this evening, is April 29th from 4:45 to 5:45 at the Steeple Center. Arbor Day, as you heard earlier, May 3rd at the former Public Works Facility. Again, that's where it's always been there, the former Public Works, now the former Public Works. And next, city council meeting, work session, May 6th, 5 to 6. City Council Meeting, 7 to 8 here at City Hall. And just to look ahead, I'd call out the city's, citywide garage sale from May 8th to May 10th, various locations in Rosemont. And then the Spring 2025 Cleanup Day, put that on your calendars, May 17th, from 8 to 12 at the Dakota County Technical College. So with that, is there any other additions or any other business to come before council? Seeing none, I move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motioned second to adjourn this evening. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.